Pedro Point Community Association. I just want to tell you a little bit about us and the firehouse, just briefly, since many of you do not live on the point. This used to be the volunteer firehouse before Pacifica was incorporated and took over fire services. And it belongs to the community. Everyone who either owns or rents here is a member of the association, and we own this building. And it's a real wonderful -- it creates a center for the community so that we have a wonderful neighborhood feel here. I want to invite everyone. We do potlucks very frequently, and there's one coming up Friday night. And I know people come who do not live on the point because it is nice to have a sense of community where you live. And you're all welcome as long as you bring something to eat. We also -- we support ourselves by renting this out for weddings and parties, and you can find us at pedropoint.org. I want to thank all the candidates for coming tonight. Sue let us -- Beckmeyer let us know she was going to be late, so we have her last, and hopefully she'll make it by the time we start. Each candidate is being given four minutes to give an introductory remark about themselves, why they're running, and what they see for Pacifica. We will then have questions, and they will have two minutes to answer the questions. We have one question that we, as an association here, would like to ask while our two question gatherers put the other questions together and collate them so that we have the gist of the questions being asked by the audience collated into three or four questions that all the candidates can answer. And then when we finish around 8:30, everyone is more than welcome to stay for a little while longer, have some snacks, mingle with any candidates that are still here. So with that, and we have a timekeeper, Sam, who will have -- has three pieces of paper. There's a green one that says the candidate has one more minute, a fifteen one -- a yellow one that says fifteen seconds, and then one that says "time's up." And yes, the lash comes out with the last one. So at this point, I would like to -- and it is being taped by -- is it being taped or streamed? It's being streamed by our local PCT, so -- and I thank them for that. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our first candidate, yes?
One microphone.
Yeah, it'll move down, yeah. To Adonika Porter.
Hello, everyone. Happy to be here this evening. I'm going to be giving you my opening statement, but before I do that, I just want to do a deep dive into something very quickly. I know that there's a lot of information circulating around, and I want to make sure that I let you know and talk to you personally to let you know that last summer I was involved in a car accident. That case was dismissed and closed, and I agreed to community service and a fine to clear it up. I'm in this race till the end. I've also been made aware by several people in the community that there was some information online about me that was not accurate. I took swift action once I was made aware. I've acknowledged it, and I've taken all of the proper steps to update it. Now, on to the good stuff. My name's Adonika Shaw Porter. I'm a wife and a mother of three, and I've lived in Pacifica for just a few years, but my husband and his family have been in this community for more than forty. I'm the daughter of a Vietnam vet, and I was raised by a single mother. I'm in the Pacifica Moms Club. I was a Halloween closet mom last year. And I'm in the process of joining our historical society, where I will be helping with marketing and communications and working on the newsletter. I work for the state at California Stem Cell Agency, and I'm a county commissioner. I serve on the board for the healthcare for the homeless and farm workers board. I value the working class. I value our minority community and our LGBTQ community as well. I value inclusion. My vision for Pacifica is quite expansive. With regards to Pedro Point, there's a few things I'd like to do. I'd like to address the parking issue here and get the stairs fixed, of course. I propose social housing as a means to reduce the homeless issue that we've had in the community at large. And I want to see that through to make sure that we don't have these tents popping up around the community. I know that it's been an ongoing issue here, and I'm aware of it. I want to fix the sidewalks to nowhere. I feel like I was walking on a sidewalk even from my car over here twenty minutes ago, and I almost fell in a pothole, so I almost twisted my ankle in these heels, but I'm here, and I made it. And lastly, you know, to my earlier point, I know that your streets are somewhat war-torn. The city already has plans to get the roads fixed back on Lindemar and parts of Oddstad. I'd like to see if we can put together a citywide plan with a prioritizing list to fix certain streets throughout the community and have community input on what that prioritization looks like. In terms of my campaign, affordable housing, economic development, and environment are my key priorities. With housing, I want to push for workforce housing projects for union workers in our labor force. And I want to work with developers to create tiny houses. I know it's a little non-conventional, but just because we have to build more housing doesn't mean that it needs to be the same size as all of the other houses that are here. It's cheaper to build tiny houses, and quite frankly, they're cheaper to purchase for people that are on fixed incomes, your seniors, as well as your millennials, your younger population, and people that might just want a trendy tiny house. In terms of economic development, I think the first thing we need to do is get a plan. We do currently have one, but it is not adopted. When you have people moving here and renting homes as much as $8,000 a month, I myself am a renter, or being purchased at as much as $1.6 million, naturally, you're going to attract new people with different tastes. I think we need to do more in terms of trying to figure out and address that wide range of residents, what it is that they want here. Me personally, because I have three littles, I'd love to see a rock wall or somewhere to take my kids on a Friday or Saturday night other than the bowling alley. We currently don't have a vision or a plan for what economic development looks like, and I'd love to put together some type of an improved vision for that. Additionally, in terms of environment, because I have fifteen seconds, I want to make sure that we do our best to protect our open spaces, which are rich in history, but I also want to make sure that there is some type of a plan in place to address all of the development that's happening here in town. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mike O'Neill. I have an accuse of not needing microphones, so I'm sorry if I yell at you. A lot of you probably know me. You've had kids in school, I was on the school board for fourteen years, I've been on city council six years. I've lived in Pacifica over thirty years. I've raised my three now adult kids here. And I know Adonika says she was the Halloween mom. I was -- I'm usually Santa Claus at Rockaway Beach. I have a lot of experience working with nonprofits in Pacifica, both at the PTO level, Boys and Girls Club, was a coach for soccer, and my son's a scout master, and he's -- and I'm like a registered scout master for them. I, in regards to affordable housing, I was the school board trustee that came up with the idea and looked at, and we are in the process of trying to build workforce housing at Oddstad School. I was also the one that implemented the 4-H Farm at Lindemar School, and the reason I wanted that there is we did have a school open at the time, and it was going to be the only program in San Mateo County with an agricultural component there. And there was a group of kindergarteners that every day went over and talked to one of the goats, and then the goats talked to them, and they had a really good time every morning talking to each other. And then they had a -- they grew their own vegetables, and then they had their Thanksgiving feast. Unfortunately, we did have to close the school due to the enrollment, but the 4-H Farm is still there. I ran into -- at an event the other night, ran into one of the parents there, and they said they had just gotten inspected by the 4-H out of UC Davis, and that's one of the best farms they have in California, so I'm proud of that. I've also worked and had the city put together a special needs registry. We all know the tragedy that happened out here on Pedro Point with the gentleman that was mentally ill. And Pacifica now is the only city in San Mateo County that has a special needs registry. If you or someone you know, or a neighbor, or whatever, or whoever has some sort of -- as a person there that has a special need, mentally ill, physically handicapped, or whatever, they can register with the police department, and if there is a call to that house, it will come up, it is anonymous, it will come up that, you know, hey, there's somebody here that might be schizophrenic. And hopefully, we can avoid the tragedy we had here roughly, what, two or three blocks away. I would like to continue the Palmetto improvements we have done and continue to build Palmetto, build that up with a specific plan, which would hasten in the interest of any sort of business people or developers that want to invest in Pacifica. And I know this might come as a shock, but I see some people like you came when I first was elected. I had infrastructure presentations on the different projects going on in Pacifica. And we do have a pavement plan, and it's rated by the Pavement Condition Index, and basically, that is the order of how we fix the streets in Pacifica. If the worst ones are getting fixed as funding becomes available. And we can't really make a lot of promises because we don't know when the funding's going to become available, but I will say, if you want more street paving, well, yes, on Proposition Six, because that'll give Pacifica roughly $600,000 more in paving.
No.
Oh, no, no. You're right. Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
No, on six. I stand for revenue by the mayor.
Thanks, John.
Hi, I'm John Keener, and I am currently the mayor. I'm a fiscal modern. We have some increased revenues, but they're offset by PERS, that is retirement and salary increases. I want to protect homes and businesses from bluff erosion and sea level rise, preserve our environment, parks, beaches, trails, Steelhead, and other wildlife, and repave arterial streets as funds permit, and as Mike said, we have somewhat more funds than we have in the past, not a lot. But while I've got your attention, I want to talk to you about climate change. Seems like all the other issues to face us, but this one's different. It will make large portions of the world unlivable. There's a new UN report this week saying that the next twelve years are critical. The increased wildfires, heat, storms, death of species, promise with agriculture, all of these are or will be events that will come to pass before a significant sea level rise affects Pacifica, although bluff erosion has always been an issue for us. We're at about one degree Celsius of temperature increase currently. That's about two degrees Fahrenheit. The new UN report talks about what steps are necessary to limit this increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius, and they are severe. We must cut CO2 emissions by 50% by 2030. That's twelve years. And we have to eliminate them completely by 2050. And in addition to changing all of our bad societal habits, we have to invent carbon capture technology, something we have no idea how to do right now. I don't think we're going to make it, but right now, CO2 emissions are still increasing worldwide. They're not decreasing. But we have to try because every fraction of a degree counts. We need political will. Every parent and grandparent should put climate change at the top of their political wish list, above even the Supreme Court. We need to get rid of coal, have a realistic carbon tax, increase federal gas taxes to reduce consumption, reduce air travel, have way more renewable energy, shift to electric vehicles and home heating, and a host of other changes. No politician has come forth to lead us because there aren't enough of us yet to make it worthwhile. We have to make it worth it while. So I'm asking you to join me and others in grassroots whispering campaign, if you will, to get their attention. Remember that we're doing this for our children and grandchildren so that they don't have to live in an overheated world. And I realize that this is not terribly relevant to the city council race, but I felt strongly that it had to be said, so thank you.
My name is Vicki Flores. I'm a fifty-year resident of Pacifica. My family moved here even before the pier was built. I remember when there was less than a thousand people here in Pacifica, and this was mostly just orange fields. I was raised here. I went to IBL school, which is, back then, was called Sharp Park. I graduated Ocean High School, spent some time at Skelling College, and finished off at Phoenix University. Some of you know me as a former CEO for the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, where I got a chance to speak with a lot of business owners here in Pacifica and residents. I'm currently on the board for the Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County. That gave me the opportunity to talk to parents, teachers, and kids, so I feel I have a good pulse on the community. I also sit on the board for the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and with my own company, I'm also helping them become their own 501(c)(3). So working with some of the environmentalists that are here that care about our beach and our parks, I've been educated very well here recently, over the last few years, and working with business owners and parents. So like I said, I feel like I have a good pulse on the community and kind of what we're looking for. What does our future look like in five years? And out of everything, everyone's talking about, you know, paving our streets. We do need economic development here. Anything that we want to do is going to cost money. People don't like to hear it, but that's the truth. If we don't have the money, then we can't fix the streets. Everybody wants it. So we need to find ways to bring money into the community. We don't have to overdevelop in order to do that. We can reuse what we currently have, so like the sewage plant system down on Palmetto. We're talking about putting a hotel there. We should also add some small shops and some businesses. The tourists that come here every weekend, where most of us just stay in our houses because we can't get to the beach because we have a lot of tourists here, those tourists should pay to come here. If you're a tourist and you go to San Francisco, you know that hotel tax is going to cost you. You know that getting on that bus or that train is going to cost you. We need to be doing the same thing here. If you want to visit, then you need to pay. So rather than taxing the local community, we need to tax the tourists that come here and visit. Secondly, I want to talk about our teens. We do a great job in this community taking care of our seniors and our toddlers, but our teens are kind of left out of the fold. I'm currently going to be doing a ribbon cutting in South City for a brand new teen center this Thursday, and I want to create one here. While working at the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, I happen to see our teens in the middle of the school day, walking down the street with a twelve pack of beer. We do have a young drinking and alcohol issue in this community. Some of you have probably seen it, and we need to address it. So I want to start a teen center here in Pacifica. Where do your teens go Friday nights, Saturday nights? They're usually outside of Pacifica, doing none is what. I would like to see those kids stay here where their parents know where they're at at all times. As far as economic development, we can bring more shops, not just the Palmetto. We have other malls in the back of the valley, Pedro Point, Lindemar, that can also have more shops, more shops that'll benefit us. Right now, you can't even buy a pair of shoes here in Pacifica. You can't get new school clothes for your kids here in Pacifica. Our money goes over to Hill, to Daly City, and Koma. We need to keep money here, and that's kind of where my focus will be. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Buffy. I am a community member. My mother has been a renter in Pacifica for so long that I used to go down to the beach to get a whiff of the ocean air, and all I could smell was the sewer building down there at Sharp Park. I don't know if you remember that. But yeah, the whole area used to stink from the sewer building down there. But she's still in Sharp Park, and she's ninety-two years old, and she's been renting in Pacifica for forty years. She's been a community member for forty years, but she has received $1,250 worth of rent increases from her early reasonable rent three years ago, and that's what started getting me to come into the city council meetings. And I've been doing that ever since, and I just keep asking over and over again. I knew somebody else at the time, same month, lost his housing. He's been homeless ever since, even though he's maintained a business that he built up himself while he was living indoors, and he's done a really brave job of keeping it together. But three days, three years is a long time to live out of your car. He lost his dog to me. I wound up getting his dog out of the deal, so that wasn't too bad, but -- so homelessness has its upsides, you know, at least for me. No, I'm only kidding. The real reason I'm running is I'm kind of the underdog. I don't have any backing. I don't have any real following. I'm a citizen that has been going into the city council meetings for three solid years trying to get them to do something about the rent crisis, which is a humanitarian crisis, which is affecting our community in more ways than one. It's disabling our economy because nobody else, nobody has any money to spend. Businesses are going out of business. Human feces is actually becoming a problem in human society here because there's so many people using the outdoors as a bathroom, that the water is starting to show some cholera in it. This is a serious humanitarian crisis that has been affecting our society very seriously. And the real estate industry, which is a predatory, it seems to be just a predatory industry, that doesn't seem to care that it's destabilizing our economy and destabilizing our society. So I really recommend people to look at that. It seems like the real estate industry has an unemptiable amount of money. It's a forever amount of money, and we cannot compete with a forever amount of money. So that's why I'm trying to do everything, you know, like old school. If you like what I say and you want to vote for me, please tell your friends, because that's all I got. I don't got anything else except for people. If people like what I say, I believe that people actually make the internet look like a joke. The web of communication that goes on between people is powerful enough to deliver us some elected officials who work for the people and not for private industry.
It's so nice to see all of these faces here tonight. I want to thank Pedro Point for having us out here tonight. It's an honor to be here in front of you. My name is Mary Beer. I was born and raised here in Pacifica. I come from a large family, I have four sisters and two brothers, and my family had a small business, the Adobe Butcher Shop, for twenty-five years up in Adobe Plaza. And so I know the importance of a small business and how it has connected myself and my family to the community. It was really awesome growing up in that environment, where we knew the community, they knew us, and I feel like, because I've been here for so long, that that's how I feel in Old Pacifica, like I know you, and now I want you to know me. There's a lot of faces out here tonight that I don't know, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I was drawn to community work in 2005 after an alcohol-related accident took the lives of two teenagers here in Pacifica, and one of those teens was my nephew Jonathan. Shortly after that, we started the Pacifica Prevention Partnership, and I was hired on to coordinate the partnership. And so over the past thirteen years, we've been doing substance abuse prevention and working with young people across the city. Over that time, you know, it's my heart's work, it's my passion, so I really care, just like Vicki, about the young people in our community. Over that time, I've been able to secure nearly $2 million in grant funding. I oversee all of the programs. We have three grants right now. I oversee the programmatic aspects of the program and all of the fiscal aspects of the program as well. Not too long ago, I participated in a program through Urban Habitats, the Boards, Commissions, and Leadership Institute. And it was a six-month intensive program where I got to study land zoning and housing and transportation. And what that program gave me was a new vision of how I can serve my community, that if we look at those three aspects of the community and we do them really well together, that we can have sustainable, smart growth, where people can have accessible transportation and housing. I truly believe that this can happen, so as one of my visions for the city, I would like to incorporate that. I serve on Pacifica's Park, Beach, and Recreation Commission. This is my third year on the commission. I love the work that Park and Rec does. It's an awesome program, and I've learned a lot about what it means to be a part of a city commission, and so it's helped me pave the way for me to come here to be with you tonight. I'm the director for the Pacifica Collaborative, which is part of the North County Outreach Collaborative, and it's another model. So all the prevention work I do is coalition model, so I work with all the sectors of the community. People come to the table with different ideas, and they can leave with a vision of, like a common goal for a healthy community. And all the work that I do combines that model. So the Pacifica Collaborative brings folks together once a month, and we get to break bread and support each other to enrich our community, and it's a really great thing. We meet the first Thursday of every month, 9:00 a.m., Pacifica School District. Come on by. So I, oh, thank you. Yeah, I believe in supporting the community services that support our community. I think that's the basic, something that we really have to focus on. I think that we have the possibility to move forward and do some neighborhood-specific planning, where we can look at smart growth and how that can affect each different neighborhood differently, and how that can look to create a full vision of the city. So I'm really, really happy to be here, and thank you for having me.
Now, I am not Sue Beckmeyer. I'm Chris Vogel, and I work for Sue Beckmeyer on her campaign, and I have made arrangements. We have made arrangements ahead of time that if Sue wasn't here, I would read a prepared statement on her behalf and then sit down. But here's the statement. Hi, my name is Sue Beckmeyer, and I'm running for city council. I want to extend my thanks to the Pedro Point Community Association for hosting this event and for graciously making accommodations to allow my campaign manager to read these prepared statements while I wrap up a prior commitment on the north end of town. I'll be here as soon as I can to participate in this evening's important candidate question and answers. Twenty-five years ago, my husband and I chose this community to put down roots and raise our family. We purchased a home, but like most residents, our investment in the life of this town has gone far beyond that. For over eighteen years, I've raised funds for music education in our underfunded public schools and have served the needs of Pacifica's youth as a school district employee for over twelve years. I've contributed to our community as the presidents of the Lindemar Parent Teacher Organization, the Pacifica Library Foundation, the California School Employees Association, Chapter 128, and Pacific Alliance Club. I've also served as a board member of Terranova Band Boosters and the Pacifica Education Foundation, and I'm an active member of the Pacifica Rotary and the Pacific Coastide Relay for Life. I have a long history of service to this community, and I think of the hundreds of volunteers, community organizations, and charitable groups, so often working behind the scenes as the quiet heroes of Pacifica. We achieve so much in this town when we work together. You only need to think back ten days ago for a great example of this with our wonderful fog fest or to community gatherings such as this one. I am a collaborative leader who listens and then offers solutions, a leader who sets a course and then follows through. I will protect homes and businesses and will push back against the Coastal Commission when ID necessary. I will work with our county, state, and federal agencies to obtain the funds needed to repair and improve our infrastructure and roads. I will fight for a larger share of these funds and won't turn them away. I'm happy with the progress our school districts have made in terms of affordable workplace housing for their employees. I know that many have worked long and hard to shepherd these projects through the many steps along the way, and I thank them for it. I hope that more such opportunities can be afforded to Pacificans from all walks of life, but I especially want to be a voice on council that ensures our seniors can afford to remain living here. And when discussion turns to affordable housing, I'd like to see aging and place options explored and developed. And we absolutely need to strengthen our economic base in order to enhance the quality of life for all Pacificans. There's no reason why the new vibrancy of the Pedro Point Shopping Center can't happen elsewhere, but it will require effort and sustained work to make this happen. elsewhere, but it will require effort and sustained work to make this happen. I look forward to working for you on council, and I look forward to a city council that focuses once again on the basics, a responsive government that provides safe streets, improved transportation, makes repairs where needed, and makes prudent, sensible investments in our future. My experience as a leader in Pacifica has prepared me to take the next step, and I would be honored to serve you as your next city council member. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're ready to start with questions. Do you want seats to, we can get some more chairs if you want to sit down? Are you okay? No, I'm gonna start with Mike. Okay. Okay, so this is the first question, which is from the, this neighborhood. Pedro Point, like all of Pacifica, has many environmental and ecotourism assets, but there has not been a general plan update completed since 1980, and therefore, the development of our local neighborhood and the larger community has been done in a microcosm, parcel by parcel, rather than considering how any development decisions fit into the bigger picture. So our question is, what is your vision for Pacifica, and for Pedro Point in particular, and how will you pursue a general plan update if elected?
Well, we are in the process of updating our general plan, but I think it's almost taken us as long to update the general plan as how the existing one is. And that's, a lot of that has to do with the funding and the cost of doing the general plan. I do disagree, unfortunately, this is common in a lot of cities, and Pacifica's not any different, that there is a development of piece by piece, parcel by parcel, versus looking at the entire, you know, body, so to speak. That's one of the reasons why I would be supportive and want to see a specific plan in Palmetto. The developer, the quarry, has approached the city about a specific plan for the quarry and then going to the voters. And I would have no problem, Pedro Point wants to develop a specific plan that could actually be done quicker than probably the general plan amendment. Most of Pedro Point would fall under the Coastal Commission guidelines, and they just came out with some residential guidelines, which could really severely restrict a lot of remodeling and building in Pedro Point and on the coast side of Pacifica. So that is something that would have to be adapted into the specific plan. But I would have no problem at all having a community-specific plan gathering for Pedro Point, and you've got a great start with the Pedro Point Shopping Center. I worked there when it was the Rose Room and the bank, and it had the same wallpaper as the bar down the street. I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but we actually had some people come up to the teller and order a drink.
Well, the GCU, the general plan update is coming after the local coastal plan update. Actually, since all of Pedro Point is within the local coastal zone, that will be the operative document. So what you really want to watch out for is after we've finished with the sea level rise component of the local coastal plan, which we've been having all these meetings about, and has been controversial, to say the least, the rest of the local coastal plan will come up for consideration. And at that time, you have to weigh in on individual pieces of property. You know, if you want, you can get together and submit a specific plan for Pedro Point. I doubt that you will get that together. You know, it turns out that you have to have certain smaller areas that are more, that have more unifying them. So, for instance, the quarry. But I think trying to legislate what happens to all these parcels shouldn't come as an overarching plan. It has to be done piece by piece.
For Pedro Point, I think the best thing to do is to get the Pedro Point community involved. What do you want to see? What do you want to have in your local community? Regardless of what the Coastal Commission does, the community needs to be heard. So I think we need to have public forums for this area, so we can have that discussion. And then we can put a realistic plan together. We can deal with the Coastal Commission as we're dealing with them now, as we have always dealt with them, but if the city of Pacifica has a pair of balls, it'll stand up and fight for you and what you want. I think the Coastal Commission at points in times can be a little bit overreaching, and I think the community needs to be heard. What I would like to see is a lot of smaller cities, just like Pacifica, come together and make sure that all small communities who are being attacked by the Coastal Commission's voices are heard, so that we can develop what we want. Some of the new rules in place, like Mike was saying, is you might not even be able to update your home or put on a new roof, and that plan is currently on hold. But those are some of the things that the city, your city council should stand up for, fighting for your, what you want in this community and the city. So I think the best thing to do is to ask the community what they would like to see. Maybe not everyone likes what's going on in Pedro Point Shopping Center. Maybe you like it, you don't like the parking situation. These are so many things that we need to talk about, the roads that are back here, like Adada mentioned. Maybe some more affordable housing units, maybe work with the planning department, so if you want to develop, you don't have to spend years trying to get permits. These are the conversations that we need to be having with Pedro Point and other communities throughout Pacifica. Thank you.
Well, my vision for Pacifica actually would entail, just as Vicki was speaking of, the people of Pacifica and the particular neighborhoods know their neighborhood better than anybody else, and to try to come in here and tell you what to do would be not the best thing, not the best outcome. And that's what I'm all about, what is going to be the best outcome for our city. I think that our city has been kept in a sort of state of limbo for decades, it seems, which is quaint in a lot of ways, but it's also beneficial to us because of the procrastination of the last few decades, we essentially have a blank slate to work with. And we are looking at a future that demands the way we change pretty much almost everything. And we have the money. If we have $80 million to spend on a new library, we certainly have $80 million. Not to spend it on a library, but let's put an electric train going down the middle of the freeway so that we can get people up to bart, you know, with a solar, a light rail, something like that. You know, like there's many, many options. We have to try something, we have to do something. It's an emergency on planet Earth. And economically, I think we can be transformed by what we have to offer. Our nature is, should, be our economy, and our nature should be included in, when we figure the cost of development. So we look at development as if it's not impacting our community, but it absolutely is because it's taking funds and energy away from projects that could be transforming, like the Ocean Discovery Center, which is one of my pet projects I'd love to see Pacifica explore. Okay, so I heard two parts of this story, and one of them was about ecotourism. Is that, is that correct? So I recently got to learn a whole bunch about ecotourism, and it started when I had some conversations with some Pedro Point folks. And so I brought a bunch of notes about it because I'm just learning. And that's what's really wonderful about this process, is that my responses to questions are evolving as I evolve, and there is a lot of potential to do some ecotourism planning here, especially in Pedro Point. And I just met with Mark from the Pacific Ocean Discovery Center, and I think there's possibilities for people to collaborate and create a whole plan around ecotourism. So that part of the question really excited me. I also propose that the updated general plan addresses Pacifica neighborhoods separately to address the unique characteristics. Like I said in my opening statement, it's really important that folk in their own communities get to be a part of the planning of what happens within their communities. And it's possible to do, again, like I said, smart, sustainable growth that connects people to transportation and housing. So thank you for the opportunity to answer the question.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I had a previous engagement out in Fairmont. So my vision, what is your vision for Pacifica and for Pedro Point in particular, and how will you pursue a general plan update if elected? My vision for Pacifica is an economically viable city that supports its residents and welcomes visitors. I think that we have the potential for that. I think we're already doing that to some degree. I just don't think we're making, we're getting as much out of the deal as some of the visitors maybe are getting. And I would like to say that I want to see Pacifica continue to honor our history and culture and preserve that because it's important to us and it's what attracts people here. But I also think there's room for looking to the future and recognizing that there's an opportunity to, with measured growth, to develop our economic base. I don't know what was said before I got here, but I've said in many of the forums that we've been at, I use the Pedro Point Shopping Center as an example of what can happen. I lived in town for 25 years, and I remember when it was a scary place. I think it's a fantastic place now. Parking, admittedly, a problem, but it's vibrant. My son got a job there, and I feel like we can do more of that around town. For Pedro Point specifically, any development of a general plan would require, and I would insist upon, local meetings in each of the sections of town so that people who know that area well have the opportunity to give their direct input.
Hi, Heather. Wait, thank you, Julie.
So, vision for Pacifica. I put my entire campaign on the slogan that family should come first. And so when I think about what that means for the community, it's very literal. How is whatever decision that I make for the community going to impact families, working class families, young families, and people that have been here for generations and decades? I feel that my vision needs to be one that equally addresses the balance between investing in environments and development. Right now, I feel like it's always either one way or the other. I'm somebody who's probably very centrist in that regard. I feel like we need to do a better job of just looking for opportunities to make sure that when we are putting or allowing in development, it doesn't destroy the environment. It should be environmentally conscious, and it should be something that the people in the community want here. With regards to Pedro Point, I think first and foremost, before you start developing up any area around here, you need to address the homeless, homeless issue, excuse me, down at the shopping center. Nobody's going to want to spend millions of dollars to invest in there if they have tents with the homeless sitting right there in that parking lot. And in terms of the commission, I feel like we need to have a better effort against their overreaching into our area and to our city. Yes, it's one thing for the city council to stand up and to say whatever they're going to say to them. I think it's quite different if we have a stronger approach and lobby against them in some of their interests. And with regards to ecotourism, I see Pacifica as a place for researchers. I work at SERM, which is California Stem Cell Agency. I'm the head of marketing and communications there, so I work one-on-one with scientists and world-class researchers to advance stem cell therapies and treatments. But in terms of Pacifica, I feel that there's so much that we could gain from inviting researchers and world-class scientists here into our community to learn more about sea level rise, climate change, our changing coast, and I feel that that needs to be a priority of ours that cannot necessarily just benefit Pacifica, but the entire region. I feel that we should leverage that. In addition to that, I would like to see some more opportunities here with my tenants.
We're going to start with John next. What are your plans to bring business to Pacifica, specifically on Palmetto, and attention, discussion of low-impact clean manufacturing?
Low impacts?
Clean manufacturing. Environmentally sensitive, you know, responsive manufacturing, yeah.
Green, yeah. Okay. Well, to start with, I should probably confess that I voted against the Palmetto streetscape every chance I got. I was the one who voted against it. I felt that, you know, we were just pouring money down the drain there. Any business that you, that is going to come to Pacifica doesn't come because we want it to come because our Economic Development Committee talks them into coming. They come because they see an opportunity to do a good business here. And right now, on Palmetto, we have very few businesses that are, I would say, you know, very broad in the sense that they attract a broad clientele. So I would think that the best we can hope for in the near term, say, the next five or 10 years, are a bunch of restaurants, better restaurants, with the hotel getting built there. Maybe we could have some better restaurants. But it's like, it would be a victim of its own success. If we have successful businesses along Palmetto, where are their clients going to park? We don't know. So, and unfortunately, I used up all my time on that and didn't get to the environmental or green businesses.
Being a resident right off of Palmetto for the last 50 years, I'm happy to see the streetscape project, but I think it was long overdue. I don't think I would call it a project if all we did was paved the street and put up the lights. I think our city taxpayer money paid for that. I wouldn't be calling it a project until we did something a little bit more than just paved the streets and put out the bulbs. What I would like to do with Palmetto, we do have a lot of hardworking business people that have been on Palmetto for many, many years. And it's not that we want to just remove them for better shops or better stores, it's how do we help them? And I think the way to do that, to make sure that we don't actually have a lot of additional traffic, is to bring tour buses through Pacifica and create a tour plan. If we do that between the hours of, let's say, 11 and 4, and you drop off 40 to 50 people on Palmetto, in Rockaway, in Pedro Point, in the back of the valley, have them take tours of the castle, have them go golfing, have them go fishing, and create this, that's foot traffic, that's not cars. That's where our businesses need. As far as green technology, I think I would like to work with some of these shopping strip owners like Tencoe to have solar put in some of these businesses and strip malls. That is green technology that can help our community right here on the coast. I would also like to see some pop-up shops along Palmetto because we do have empty lots. If we had pop-up shops, people could come during that time as well. And we could also take the farmers' market and move it throughout Pacifica and not just have it in one location. That's additional foot traffic. So that way, we're not increasing traffic, we're creating foot traffic for the businesses, and we're helping the businesses better here. People talk about Palmetto as if the businesses that are there should just be removed. Those people work hard to start those businesses, they deserve to keep those businesses. We need to be supporting them and maybe adding additional businesses to some of the empty lots that are here. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that I mentioned before was the Oceanic Discovery Center. I met a man through the course of going to the city council meetings that had a plan. He had made this plan up 20 years ago, 1998, to repurpose the sewer buildings down there.
He had made this plan up 20 years ago, 1998, to repurpose the sewer buildings down there, which is property that Pacifica owns and could easily be done. The plan has been poo-pooed and is still being poo-pooed by our government. And the only reason why I can think why the same people would be for a library down there, supposedly to bring business in, but a library doesn't make any revenue, and it's also not that attractive anymore in 2018 to build a library. But if you had an Oceanic Discovery Center down there, and I've asked all the shopkeepers down there, people that I've met, and everybody gets very excited about it. And it could be an environmentally, we could repair the ocean, we could have a research center, there could be a desalination program going on. Not to mention the $20 million expected in revenue. Now, if we operated it as a public utility, which is absolutely our prerogative to do as a city, that would be sort of like living in Alaska with a pipeline running through it. Instead of paying taxes, you'd be actually getting a check because the revenue would be going directly to the taxpayers of Pacifica. And we could operate it as a nonprofit, community-run, benefit not only to the public of Pacifica, but to the environment itself. It's a really great idea and we bring business down there. To me, this is one of those no-brainers that, for the life of me, I cannot figure out why it's been so overlooked, except that there's a couple of developers in town that have plans for that property, so.
So I think that Pacifica has a great opportunity to go with the momentum of the Palmetto downtown area. If we create a downtown space where it can be a destination where people will come here, we need to bring more people here so that our businesses can thrive. We can do that through media marketing. We can also do that through connecting our history and our culture and the ecotourism aspect. So we have like the Aroni Portola Heritage Trail Project coming up. We have the 250th anniversary of the Portola Expedition. It's going to bring a lot of attention here to Pacifica. If we could connect all of those things and then advertise them through media marketing and get eyes on Pacifica, we can get more people here, which in turn will promote our businesses. I do think that we have an opportunity to do some infill development along Palmetto, some mixed-use businesses with affordable housing. All of these things together can really create a vibrant place for people. And then we'll have like the hotel project and the library, some public art. There's a lot of visions out there for this whole area. And I think we just have to keep expanding those visions and bringing more people around the table to keep planning it all together.
I think that the Palmetto area is an opportunity that Pacifica has not taken advantage of for a very long time. I know the funding to do the street scape has been various. It's been in hand and then not. We were able to get the lights done, we were able to get the striping done and the ball belts. It's become a nice opportunity for community groups to come and plant those ball belts. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity in November with a couple of groups I am involved with, the Lions Club and the Rotary Club, which have adopted corners. We see tremendous investment on the heart of our community every year. 10 days ago, a protest. But we don't see that throughout the year. And I think we have an opportunity for that. I would like to see the hotel project happen. I would like to see some additional retail to support a hotel and to support the neighborhood that is there. It is, after all, already a neighborhood. There are people who live there, and we would want to see their involvement in bringing something that's going to fit with that neighborhood, that's going to serve the residents as well as visitors. In terms of low-impact green industry, I think we have a lot of opportunity. I'm not sure that Palmetto's necessarily the right place. I think we should consider looking at the quarry for that. But we already have a green building ordinance, so any kind of structures that we might want to put in place to address any sort of light industry would have to conform without those guidelines as well as other environmental guidelines. Parking is absolutely an issue. It can be addressed. The city owns a parking lot right across from Little Brown Church. We could build under and we could expand parking in that area.
Thank you. So first and foremost, I'm absolutely in favor of a Palmetto development project. But I think what needs to come before that is some type of an economic development plan with a cap on tourist-based businesses. I have a problem when you have families paying as much as $8,000 a month to rent, and all of the businesses that we plan to bring in here would focus on folks that don't actually live here and pay taxes here and send their kids to school here. So I would want to see some tourism-based businesses there. But I'd also like to see some businesses that families and people that are part of this community can frequent and then they can support. And businesses that they, quite frankly, might even want to own themselves. I know quite a few people that own businesses outside of Pacifica because it's very hard to run one here, do business restrictions, red tape. And I think if we relax some of those or find a way, excuse me, to keep them here or to make certain opportunities available to them, they might be more interested, considering that they live here, to bring them back here. I'd like to see a green shuttle from BART to Pacifica. This is something that would probably be a regional plan. But I do think that could be one way that we could address certain issues that we're facing with parking. And I say shuttle, not bus, because shuttles are easier to get through our streets. They will not take as much space on the freeway. And I'd like to see them go through more than just during an afternoon time. I'd like to see them go at least two to three times a day. And I'd like to see some restaurants here, but I also want to see some guidelines, particularly around trash. I think if you go up to Manor, there's a lot of businesses there, and there's trash all over the place, and some businesses are really good about picking it up, others not so much. In terms of restaurants, I'd like to put more restrictions or guidelines around the types of trash cans or compostable options that they have in their restaurants to make sure that people have somewhere else to put their, whatever their utensils are after their meal. It drives me up a wall that we've got big-box businesses here like McDonald's and who knows with the incoming Panda Express that only have that one trash can. There should be some work for those compostable items to go. Thanks.
Okay. I know it's kind of tough being the last one because you kind of sound like the echo chamber. But I do support Palmetto. I voted for it. And mainly, I think the best way to take the most advantage out of Palmetto, like the Sharp Park area, is to do the specific plan. And this specific plan, you can address parking. And this is done with community hearings, community opportunities for input. So it's not done in the back room of the city at all. But you get a specific plan that will allow you to plan for parking, also plan for housing, both affordable and some market rate. And the biggest thing that would attract the business is the fact that you do not take, it would remove the uncertainty. The investor or businessperson knows that you want a restaurant here, you want a store of some kind or whatever. So that removes the, that's an incentive because they know you basically kind of pre-approved that business. Are, we are attractive because we are, household income here is very similar to Belmont's. It's over $100,000, the household income. But one of the things I think we could really do well is if we have some sort of regularly scheduled events, some sort of public plaza. I know Regent City has the courthouse square in front of the old courthouse. On Thursday nights, they have a big blow-up, like those Kids Castle movie screen. And I just found out apparently that like once or twice a month, they have a blow-up pub that blows up, and they invite all the craft breweries in San Mateo County to go down there and sit on the blow-up pub. So I just think that would be kind of a nice thing to do, especially in these nice Palmetto days here. And we have been contacted by very clean, green energies. They would come in here, low-impact, 40 jobs, spread over 24/7, the potential of these $640,000 worth of impact. Working out with negotiations.
Thank you. The next question is about the library and your opinion of, on the new proposed plan for a two-library system. That would be Sanchez as an open access and, if I'm reading this right, and Sharp Park being remodeled into a larger, more staffed library?
I'm all in favor of keeping both libraries. Due to the landscape of Pacifica, having just one library does not work. Having two, and one here in Sharp Park and the one in Sanchez, makes it easier for both the people in the back of the valley and the people that are up here up front to navigate both those centers. I know it's going to be some time before the one in Sharp Park gets remodeled, but I'm all for that. I would like us to get a brand-new library, which would be more beneficial, updated. I don't know if you have seen the library in Half Moon Bay, but it's pretty nice. I would love to have something like that here in Pacifica. Unfortunately, the library measure that we had a little while back failed by a very small margin. But we will do what we can with what we have, and if that's remodeling Sharp Park, then let's go that route. I would like to see, there's a lot of land where the Sanchez library is. I'd like to see us grow that library a little bit more. And I know resources are thin, and we're splitting, you know, people that work at the library between both the one in Sharp Park and the one in Sanchez. And I think if we work with some of our nonprofits, maybe we can get some more volunteers to staff those a little bit more. Because the library actually helps our kids, and it is the future. I don't think, like Brittany said, I would have to disagree. I think libraries are a way to go, and I think they are a way of the future. If you've been in one recently, there's a lot of technology. There are teen centers in some of these libraries. So I'm for keeping both of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, of course, the Oceanic Discovery Center would also have a tech room as well. So the technology that they talk about we might be able to access in a library all could be in the Oceanic Discovery Center. And the truth is, is our libraries in Pacifica, I use the libraries, and I know people who use the libraries. And it's not a large group of people, but I've asked a lot of people. Most people are pretty satisfied with our libraries. They should definitely use some spiffing up. And there is money for that because there's been grant money available for many, many years now. Our city has decided to use that grant money to try to shove a brand-new library down Pacifica's throat. And they continue to do so today, even though a signature gathering campaign to put it on the ballot failed. The city council decided to just put it on the ballot anyway. And then that ballot measure failed. But neither of that stopped the city from pursuing a new library. Took the $280 million, like I said. And when we're looking at the kind of changes that we really, really need to start thinking about doing as far as the environment goes, the traffic in our city is, the traffic alone is causing the carbon pollution that could be eliminated, but isn't. And it's because the city staff is actually focused on things like this new library that just won't die. And this is what I mean about the city plan. I would love to see the community get involved and sit down and say, where do we want to put our resources? Rather than having other people tell us that, well, we're going to do this. That's not democracy. And I encourage everybody here, you know, you're engaged, you are listening, you're paying attention, you're awake. With this amount of people, we could push our current government. It doesn't matter what this election turns out. As the people of this country, we are entitled to a voice.
So I can remember being a little girl and getting out of my car and having to plug my nose to run into the library. Because that's how bad that area smelled, is true. But also, the library building is pretty much the same as it was so many years ago. So I'm really excited for the opportunity to have an upgraded library system. I think it's really important to include both libraries. You know, the open access plan, it's amazing. It can do so many things without a whole lot of staffing. And the plan that they put forward is really worth taking a look at. They're also looking at expanding services for our park, beach, and recreation department in the same space back there at the Sanchez library space. And I think that's great too, because they can have programs there that won't require a whole lot of staffing. So there can be, you know, more hours of operation back at Sanchez with the open access plan because we don't necessarily need to have staff on site. So I think it's a great plan, and I'm excited about it.
Well, I kind of care about libraries. It's been a passion of mine for a very long time. And it's the work that I do at Combrillo School. I led the bond campaign that had nearly 55% of Pacificans vote yes, that had more yes votes than any city council person has ever had. And there was a definite interest in improving our libraries, in improving our library services. But what there also was, was a very clear message from the community that they did not want to see one library. However wonderful, however efficient, however grand it might be, access was more important, and that is something that we have to listen to. If you haven't been to the Half Moon Bay Library, that opened, that was built and opened in the meantime, since our bond did not reach the threshold necessary to fund the project, I would like to encourage you to go. It is stunning building, and it is so perfectly suited to the town. And that is what we could have. That is what our students, our children, our teens, our seniors could have. In addition, with the two-library model, we get to have Sanchez, and we get to expand what's available there because we have Parks, Beaches, and Recreation as a partner. So it's a really positive time. We're going to have to work hard because the only way any of this is going to get done is through a general obligation bond or a super-rich person writing a giant check. We kind of waited for that for a while and it didn't come through. So it's got to be something the community's behind because they absolutely are going to pay for it. You're right.
So I had previously been for one library because I heard about all of the great things that were going on over in Half Moon Bay. And with Littles, I have to tell you, I was a little jealous. Because I was like, oh my God, their library's going to be so fantastic. But after further research and receiving a lot of emails from concerned residents about my position, I now understand the importance of having two. What I would like to stress, though, is that with the Sanchez library, I'd like to see it get kind of a facelift. I'd like to see it double as an innovation center or somewhere where researchers can go. I like the idea of the extended access. I do have a little bit of a concern with limited staffing, if that might cause an issue with homelessness, with we have people actively going to that area and not a lot of monitoring. So if anything, we have to have the technology to allow people with key cards in after certain hours. I'd like for it to be modeled after something that we see over at Stanford or Cal. Again, somewhere that the community can enjoy, but also an attraction to people who are really interested in coming here to study our coast and to families and kids here that want to learn more about what's going on in our community.
Okay. I have a supporter of the libraries in Pacifica. But the library is not just a place, you know, Alexander the Great made and Alexander the Age. It is a living, breathing place that the community comes together. Everybody goes to work, everybody goes home, and the library's the third place to go. It provides a lot of social services. When we cut the hours at the Sanchez library, one of the major, one of the entities that had the most major impact was the Pacifica Resource Center because people applying for jobs did not have access to a computer to apply for those jobs. We all, it also provides for young mothers or dads the opportunity for story time, music time, for the kids to learn in their personal skills and what it's like to talk to a human being, and it isn't through a phone. It's an opportunity to read, you know, Mood, you know, Good Night Mood and stuff. But it's also a place where we've, you know, most of this room looks like we've probably experienced child rearing or teenagers. At Half Moon Bay, they have a room there, it's a teen room. And it's, believe it or not, living safely with the quiet room next door where the seniors go. It provides the opportunity for generations to meet each other, mix with each other, and build the community that you need. And despite what some people say of it not having support, it had almost And despite what some people say of it not having support, it had almost 55% support. It did not have the 67%, which is required for a bond. So Pacificans, and the staff is working on this, because council is following the direction of the voters, which happened to be the community, and that was 55%. So a library is not a place for books. It's a place where family and community can be formed.
So I was against the library bond measure, because Sanchez would have been closed and sold. So I'm gratified to see that everybody's come on board with the two-library system, and that depends on an open access model for Sanchez, which will rely on key cards, your library card, to get in the door, to open the little crates or places where your books that you've ordered have been stashed and so on. And it will greatly reduce the staff time that is required to run that, leaving more staff time for the new Sharp Park library, which is what the object is. And hopefully, this model will be enough to make up that 12 points, you know, from 55 to 67% that the measure failed by last time.
Okay, next question. What are two specific ideas you have to address both the continuing increase of rents in our community, as well as increased utility bills? And what is the city government's role in impacting these?
Yeah, one thing I just want to say is, it's just so ironic to me that the same exact people who tell you that they are so concerned that people have a quiet place to live, will also tell you, if they're not that concerned, that they're sleeping under bushes. And that is addressing this issue of rent. Yes, I saw a three-bedroom, two weeks after Measure C did not pass, and it didn't pass because city council members lied to the public, and that is in the public record. November 27th, 2017, if you want to look at that council meeting, it is in the public record that there was no taxes involved, and it wasn't going to cost Pacifica anything to pass a rent stabilization ordinance to keep people in our homes. If you don't think we need that, two weeks after that measure failed, I saw a three-bedroom house for $6,300 a month. This is an out-of-control situation. It is causing people to lose their housing. I talked to a woman outside of the Safeway. She was paying $2,600 a month, and her landlord wasn't happy with that. It's not a new building, he's owned it for decades. He needed another $400. Because of that $400, she's sleeping in her car in the back of the valley. She's lived in Pacifica for 40 years. She's 57, she's disabled. This is not okay. We have to change it. And there are answers to it, and yes, a temporary moratorium on rent increases and no-fault evictions is a no-brainer, and it is something that our current council could do tomorrow if they wanted to. And this is one of the things I'm encouraging the public to do. This is inhumane at this point. We have working people, taxpayers, law-abiding citizens, some people working two or three jobs, living in their cars. It's unacceptable for the richest county and the richest country in the United States. So I was a big advocate for the rent stabilization ordinance that was proposed to our community, and the community voted it down by a lot, right? And so it's really important that we understand that that is how our community felt about the rent stabilization ordinance, regardless of how I felt about it. I'm a renter, I pay over 50% of my income on rent. I live month-to-month in fear of when it's going to happen again, and where I'm going to move to, and if I can stay here, and how I'm going to serve my community. So there's a lot of fear out there. I think one thing that we need to do is we need to have a data tracking system, so that we can actually track the increases, the evictions, the faults for the evictions, and then how much rents are going up, because if we don't have that data, then we're just trying to guessing, right? We can hear stories, we all have stories. I mean, I can tell you how much my rent went red up, right? But we need the data, so that we can actually do something about it, and we can have a solid system that we can create from that data. And you know, more than anything, we need to connect people to services. We need to keep telling people that it's okay to ask for help, even just to stay in your homes, right? There's services available. The Pacifica Resource Center is the best place for anyone to get help with anything. So we need to collect data. We need to keep people in their homes by connecting them to services. And then the part about the utility bills, one thing I like about this whole process is I get to learn new things. So I'm going to go back, and I'm going to learn about that, because I honestly don't know, and I will, I'm happy to keep learning, so, thanks.
Two specific ideas to address increased rents and utility bills. Well, as Hudson said, the rent control measure that was put forward did not pass. I think that was largely because people worried about losing control of their private property and not being able to utilize an investment that many people had made for their own future in their own retirement. And when fear is happening, people clamp down, there's no doubt. So what I think needs to happen is more discussion, more data, I agree. We need to have a board that would self-police, a board that would be made up of renters and property owners, and that would work through issues. I think this was implemented initially, but it was abandoned when the rent control ordinance was put forward, and I think it's something we should consider. We haven't seen rent control work anywhere. What it ends up doing is leaving many places vacant, and it doesn't address the people who need housing. What does address that is affordable housing. I work for the school district, and I'm really pleased about the project that's happening at the Oddstead site. It does admittedly, not me, because I am a homeowner, but people who work for the school district have the opportunity to rent at least half of fair-market value, so that we can attract and retain qualified staff and keep our schools strong. We can look at a model like that with city-owned property. There are opportunities to consider using these public lands for affordable housing, and I certainly would support anything like that.
So I'm a renter. I live in the back of the valley on Terranova, and like many families that are back there, I rent at a very high rate, between $4,000 and $8,000 a month, on top of raising a family. That said, though, I want to be very clear that I am not for rent control, but I am for rent stabilization. They are two different things. I'm not for rent control, because I think that it's not always necessary. I do think that there are a number of socioeconomic issues that need to be addressed. First and foremost, like living wages, and finding a way to help families and people keep down medical bill debt, educational debt, and other things that could contribute to their inability to pay their rent. I also want to, you know, remind you all, at least from my point of view and my perspective, that not, in not all cases, that people are raising the rent, it doesn't have to do with anything personal. I would personally see some people raising the rent as a means to pay for their kids to get through school, or to pay for medical bills, or to help other family members address emergencies in their lives, so that's something that I would want to allow those families to continue to do. In terms of utility bills, I'd like to see a regional approach to energy-saving options and incentives to help keep those bills down, and other educational outlets or forums where people are made more aware of some options that PG&E already does currently offer to families that live here, to homeowners, but then to also the people who are already on fixed or low income, and to seniors as well.
Okay, in regards to rent, as you as well know, I wasn't a big supporter of rent control. However, one of the factors I would like to look at is a conversion ordinance, because here, especially on the coast, and it might even have happened near Pedro Point, but I know it's happened in West Sharp Park, is somebody is converting their homes basically from either a single-family home, or a duplex or whatever, to an Airbnb. Now, that obviously means they're running a hotel. If it's a four-in-a-department building and it's converted to Airbnb, they're now running a hotel, and you have a commercial enterprise in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I would really like to look at some sort of conversion ordinance. I am concerned about the effects the Coastal Commission's residential building guidelines has on the city following the state policies of accessory dwelling units, ADUs. I think that's a concern I have, because some of their regulations in converting existing housing or extending the life of a structure would not be beneficial if you did an ADU on your property. And again, I was the one that started the workforce housing project back at Oddstead, so I do believe in affordable housing. If we elect today, I have a couple other ideas I would like to work on. I just have to find somebody who might pay great and pencil it out and see how it would work. Utility bills, unfortunately, there's not a lot of municipality can do. John is real familiar with the Peninsula Clean Energy, and we could look to see, like what Donika said, regards to what sort of programs PG&E might offer. But there is, I know everybody over 62, I guess, you can get a certain percentage off your PG&E bill. So anyhow, I also just believe that rent control is not a real good long-term housing
I supported rent stabilization, Measure C. That failed by 22 points. So that's not coming back soon. And, you know, I voted along with Mike, to his credit, and for three other people in council, two other people in council, to put it on the ballot, and the voters said no.
Can we address broad issues, please? What, does everybody want to?
No, excuse me, Bridgette?
Bridgette?
Don't hijack what's going on.
Really, it's an issue.
No, Bridgette?
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 It's not your turn. Why did it fail, John?
Bridgette?
Bridgette?
You're saying, why did it fail?
I think John should maybe get a couple more.
We'll give John a little time.
I'll start over again, John, sorry.
Or, you know, give me an extra 30 seconds or something. So the rent stabilization measure failed, you know, I accept that. I think we have to accept that and move on. And regarding the increased utility bills, Peninsula Clean Energy, which most of you have for providing electricity, it charges 5% less than PG&E, so that's not much, but it's something. And the good news is that it provides electricity that's over 80% greenhouse gas-free. So that's all I can say.
So two ideas for rent increase. One, I think we need to have conversations with property owners and landlords, and the city should offer an incentive to make sure these rents stop increasing or actually even get reduced. Second idea would be to increase the percentage of affordable housing these apartment owners are providing. So those would be two ideas. Regarding utility increases, there's a couple of things that I've done already. So one, I happened to take a look at, I don't know if you've taken a close look at your water bill, but if your water bill is $38, the cost to bring that water to you is $45. So that is driving me completely insane. I sent my bill directly to Jerry Hill, and I talked to him about it, and he is looking into it. He said he had no idea it was happening. I've talked to local business owners about the sewage costs that they're being stuck with, and the tens of thousands of dollars that they're paying, so that's also being looked into. So action has been taken. The Peninsula Clean Energy bill, where I'm going to tell you guys is to look very closely at it. Yes, it's saving you money versus PG&E, but there's actually a hidden cost of $10 a month, and it's kind of called a support fee. That you was on your bill, but you have not signed up for. If you call them, they will take it off. It will take somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 days, but I saved my parents at least additional $10. So look at your bill, look at the fees, call and ask questions, and get the fees removed. And they will tell you, "Oh, it's just a support fee, but you didn't sign up for it." So those are my two ideas for rent increase and my solutions for utilities. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a few minutes left, so we want to, there was one last question, and we want to give each candidate a minute to answer it, because it should be short, which is, who is your major, your largest donor, and in what way does that impact you and the role you would have in city council?
So I appreciate the opportunity to thank the community so much, because all of my funding has come from you. I've gotten $10, I've gotten $25. My biggest supporter is a lovely woman named Rosemary Piper, who has given me $2,000, you know, to, so dollar by dollar, little by little, we've been able to raise enough money to actually do this thing, and so I'm so proud of that. Other than that, there's not any outside interest funding my campaign, it's all coming from you. So thank you so much.
My largest donor is Sam Carr. My, how it affects me is, it helps me run my campaign. That's it. I have a tremendous amount of support from the community, and I really think the reason Sam Carr is supporting me is because they believe that I can look at the issues, and I can address concerns about the community, and also look at the impact on property owners. And that is their main concern. We are a bedroom community, we, many of us own homes, and this is a very serious thing in a person's life. It's the largest investment that most people make. And so it affects me, because I want to make sure that the people of Pacifica are protected. I'm very grateful for the support I've received in the community, and I have no time.
My largest supporter is labor. I work for the state, and I get a pension, which is kind of unheard of for anybody my age or that I even know. In terms of how it would impact me, I'm particularly interested in how we're going to take care of our CalPERS bill. So I would say that for me, making sure that I have a way, or my voice would be used, to make sure that we have a way to support the people that have given and paid into CalPERS for years, to make sure that they're paid, would be a priority of mine. And I also would be advocating to make sure that we do at least consider some type of a workforce housing opportunity for the labor force, and to find a way to keep the people that are in the labor force that do live here in Pacifica employed, whether it's here in Pacifica or not, and housed here primarily.
My largest donor is Sam Carr, which is roughly about 10% of what I have raised. The rest has been by individuals and some labor. In all the elections I've had in Pacifica, my largest donor has been labor over the years, and the rest has really been individuals.
So all of my donors are individuals. I will not take contributions from organizations or businesses, and I have two donors that have contributed almost $1,000.
My largest donor is Sam Carr, and the amount is $2,500. I had no idea how expensive it was to run a campaign, but it's not $2,500. I had no idea how expensive it was to run a campaign, but it's not $2,500, I can tell you that. It's a lot closer to 15 or 20, so it's a very small amount. But I am thankful for that organization. One of the reasons that we had such a big debate on managed trees, because Sam Carr came in, put flyers all over the community to wake people up that we actually were having public forums, so that way we can actually make sure our voices have been heard. My second largest donors are actually the seniors here in Pacifica. I know they're on fixed income, so I am really grateful for their support. They've been here a long time, they have a vision, and they would like to see it come to fruition sometime soon.
Hi, Jen. Yeah, I don't take any money, I haven't taken any money, and that's probably why I'm saying some things that are out of the ordinary. I don't owe anybody anything, I have no endorsements. I'm doing this because it's my civic duty and my civic right to do so at this point in American history. Three elections in a row have gone by where the people's voice was not what wound up being the end result. And that's not democracy. It's just not. This isn't the Roman Empire, and it's not the Catholic Church. It's the United States of America. Women are equals in America. We deserve representation. And everybody in Pacifica should pay very, very close attention to this, to this election, because if I'm not mistaken, if we do not force our elected officials to change something about the way the elections are run, we will wind up with just three more real estate development people on the council, which will be four to one. And they're not, they're not, they're still struggling with whether climate change is real.
Okay, okay. I want, that's, I wanna thank all our candidates for coming. I want, I want to thank all the attendees for coming. And November 6th is Election Day. I'm not sure if we're doing, it's all by mail. It's all by mail, so you don't even have to leave your house. We will miss coming down to the firehouse and voting. And you won't get your little stickers saying you voted. But please vote anyway. We have some cookies in the back, and hopefully the candidates can spend a little time walking. And fold up the chairs, is that, yes. And if you...